Good evening. Welcome to the Northampton City Council Meeting of December 21st, 2017. I'm City Council President Bill Dwight and I'll be presiding. This is our last meeting of this year and of this term. It's also the longest night of the year and it is my great ambition to make sure that that isn't actually realized here tonight. It will not be the longest night of the year here with... So, as is our custom, we open up before we convene and determine a quorum, we open up the floor to the public to speak on any topic that they're choosing. We simply ask that you keep remarks under three minutes. You identify yourself when you step up, state your name and address for the public record, and respect the decorum of the chamber. And with that, I will ask Mr. Roy C. Martin to step up, please.
Seeing as I'm the only person here, all right?
Well, no.
Well, my name is Roy C. Martin. 81 Con Street, Northampton, Massachusetts, 01060. All right. As I said to all of yous before, right, we must remember that there is POWs and MIA's that never came back and we have not found and we're still finding bodies here and there buried in pits and stuff like that. And there's probably still POWs from Vietnam and Korea, right? That they've got older, but they're probably somewhere there. Anyway, right, let's have a prayer for them on Christmas Day, right? I would appreciate that from everyone. And they are our fallen veterans, right? And all veterans should be honored, right, on Christmas Day. Thank you. Now, right, on to something else. One more thing, all right? I have a little problem with Northampton Housing, right? I saw the other day where Northampton Housing had hired two persons of color, all right, for some little infraction. And then it came to my knowledge that two other persons of color last week were fired, which meant that the four people of color, right, are no longer working there and it seems to be that it's an all-white persons working there. Now, right, they also have hired out of all of the housing complexes, they've hired two or three or four guys, and they're paying them $100 a month, taking off their rent, all right, you know, to do that work. Now, if these people are getting $100 a month, where's $100 a month coming from? Is that coming out of her budget, number one? And number two, right, you know, if they're taking union workers' jobs and they're taking jobs for $100 a month that these people are getting paid $13.50 an hour for, right, and they're not working there because they're fired, right, how many more is she going to fire and hire out of there for $100 a month? You know, I don't think... I think this whole board ought to sit down and take a look at Kara, right, and find out what is going on with Northampton Housing Authority. Because I don't think it's fair at all to the maintenance people, it ain't fair, right, and to the people that's living in Northampton Housing Authority. And I've heard complaints from other housing authorities, Maple Street and up there, right, same type of stuff going on. So, I bring it to you people, because I took it to the Gazette and they didn't want to hear it. You know, Roy Martin, they don't want to hear from him anyway, right? You know, he's a husband. And I took it to News Channel 22 and, of course, yeah, we'll be in touch. They never do. All right, so anyways, but I'll bring it to you people. Can somebody do something? Yes, I hear the buzzer. Thank you. Have a good day and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all of you.
Thank you very much.
Remember that prayer.
There's no one else signed up here? Is anyone else interested in speaking at this time?
Laura, is there a way the video on these is enabled or is it only this one?
The monitor is dead.
Yeah, having technical difficulties with it.
It's dead. Okay, thanks.
So, I'm going to ask the administrative assistant to call the roll, please.
Sure.
Counselor Bidwell.
Here.
Counselor Cardy.
Present.
Counselor Dwight.
Here.
Counselor Barge.
Present.
Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor Nash.
Here.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Here.
Counselor Shara.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. We are convening. There are no public hearings scheduled today. One-minute announcements? Nothing? All right. No one-minute announcements. Your Honor, communications proclamations from the mayor?
Yes.
Nope, he's good. All right, we move right into resolutions and this is Item 17.49419. It's a resolution to support the $15 minimum wage with positive recognition from Community Resources from the 18th of this month. Is there a motion for it on the floor?
Move approval.
Second. Discussion, please.
I can start off if that works. And this was presented in Monday's meeting of the Committee on Community Resources and I thanked the committee at that time and I'll thank them again now for taking the time to consider it because it was the only item on the agenda. And other counselors came as well, Counselor Nash, Counselor Barge, Counselor Murphy, all turned out to discuss this. And the purpose of the meeting was to invite comment from the public as well, including business owners in Northampton and labor representatives in a cross-section. So, I think that's good that that outreach was done and I'm thankful to the chair and the committee for doing that. Basically, say what I said then, which is, and not try to repeat what I said at the last council meeting, which is if we don't increase the minimum wage, that is a policy choice in and of itself. Because as it stands, because of cost of living increases that happen every year, the minimum wage and its value essentially gets ratcheted down year after year after year. And adjustments to the minimum wage undoubtedly have diverse and complex effects in our local economy, but so does the decision to allow the minimum wage to decline continually. So, it's my belief that the minimum wage, if we're going to have it, we should have it. It should be indexed to cost of living increases. Adjusting it to 15 kind of corrects for historical diminishment in its value. And then the legislation, the spirit of which this resolution supports, would peg the value going forward to inflation and cost of living increases. So, I think that's important. I think that, you know, economic prosperity and economic justice are not incompatible and that's an ideal that is at the root of this for me. And so, I'll leave it at that. I'd like to hear what other counselors have to say about it and happy to answer any questions if I can.
Thank you. And thank you, Counselor O'Donnell. We did hear on Monday night from a number of people from both the business community as well as, as Counselor O'Donnell noted, from the Franklin Hampshire Labor Council and from the Pioneer Valley Coalition for the Living Wage. Both spoke in favor of raising the minimum wage and put it in the context, as we spoke about, we have had a, and as I said on Monday night in full disclosure, I was one of many in the community, including YES Northampton, Jobs with Justice, numerous community groups that gathered signatures for the upcoming, to put a question on the ballot to raise the minimum wage. Those signatures have been gathered and at the same time, there are the two pieces of legislation in the House and Senate that both look to a four-year incremental raise of a dollar per year to raise to $15. And so, the resolution supports really that legislation even though, I mean, hopefully we won't need to go to a ballot question if that legislation does pass sometime in the spring. We know our state representative is in support of it. I have been involved in lobbying efforts on that behalf. So, I know we also heard, and of course, a number of things. We heard from Counselor Murphy who talked about the, really being able to pay attention to the local issues. I mean, it's true. We are in a very... We're in a unique community and we have a lot of small businesses and a lot of retail. And there are concerns people have raised about the impact on businesses. However, we have had this already recently. We looked at what happened from $8 to $11 and I don't think we saw the kinds of impact that a lot of people were concerned about. And then, as Counselor O'Donnell noted, looking at the historical data, even presently at $11 an hour, the earning power is closer to a 1968 scenario rather than 2017. So, the indexing is the most important piece of the legislation because we have to get to a point where we're no longer trying to push for a raise in a minimum wage that will adjust to the inflation and cost of living and have something that automatically does that. So, for those reasons, I'm really happy to co-sponsor this resolution.
I should note that we actually have been, all of us have been receipt of written testimony that will be submitted into the public record for the most part. And I think you've all had an opportunity to read them, so... Other comments and discussion?
If there were a technical amendment at some point?
Sure.
I'm happy to defer. It's very brief.
Okay.
It would, just an amendment to the last paragraph. Because the original sponsor in the Senate is no longer a member of the Senate, I would like to change that to reflect that. The person who I would say is sort of leading the effort in the state senate is not technically a co-sponsor. So, what I would like to do is delete the words "the sponsors of" and then the bill numbers. So, just leave the names. And then I would like to change Senator Donnelly to Senator Friedman. And that's just a technical correction I'd like to make.
Is there a second to the change?
If that's some motion, I'll second it. Discussion on the proposed amendment?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Counselor Bidwell.
Thank you. As I've said before, I've thought the National Fight for 15 campaign is critically important and I see this as our local Massachusetts-level component of it. I particularly like the indexing feature. I'm really pleased that we all agreed to hit the pause button to take in a little local commentary, I think, on something like this. It is our job to act on something that is sort of a macro issue, but to do it taking into account local impacts. And as has been noted, we've heard a lot of comments from businesses, from nonprofits, from school department, from our finance director. I think we have to just hope that, for the most part, this will have very beneficial results. The thing is, we never know. I don't, not sure the shift from 8 to 11 can be compared to the shift from 11 to 15 in terms of impacts. I think there probably will be some businesses that will do very well. There will be some that may struggle. There will be some that'll struggle and find innovations and adaptations that will make them more efficient and better. And there's, we've heard a couple of restaurants that predicted flat out they'll go out of business. Time will tell. But there will be probably some sectors and some entities that are hit more than others. Nonetheless, I think it's appropriate that we move forward. We just need to understand that there's unexpected consequences for sure. And we have done our job, I think, by taking into account local impacts. One of the things that we did here at the local level, of course, was certain categories of wage earners are not supporting a family on the wages that they earn. Teenagers working at a deli or an ice cream shop are sort of the classic local examples. And so, there's been some talk of whether there should be or could be a second tier addressed in the legislation. And I raised the possibility at the committee meeting Monday of amending the resolution to ask our representatives to at least address that. I had a chance to talk with John Robertson today. He's the legislative director for Mass Municipal Association. I was curious to hear his take on it. And MMA, just so everyone knows, is not taking a formal position on it because municipalities are exempt from minimum wage law. But he has been following the matter pretty closely. And his understanding is that there is indeed, in this very fluid legislative situation, there is discussion of some version of another tier, whether it would be by sector of the economy or by age. We all agree there's real problems in how you'd ever define that, but apparently there is discussion there and I think it's good that there be discussion there. But I've decided to not try and come up with the language to actually amend the resolution, so I'm not going to do that. But I do intend to, with our own legislative delegation, encourage them to at least look at the possibility of some second tier, which would, I think, could make a very big difference, not just bottom line of businesses, but teenagers' access to summer jobs that we worry about might be, over time, cut off as an unintended consequence of this. We did also note that I heard from a couple of retailers who said they thought it was unfortunate they were taking this up during the absolute busiest time of the year for them when there's no way they could come here to be here. But perhaps at second reading, if we do, if we go on to second reading in January, then if we take it, then we might hear from some other folks then. So, I'll vote for it, but I just wanted to say that about local impacts.
Counselor Barge.
Yeah. I was very pleased to get the information from our financial director, Susan Wright. And I'm glad that we're not doing the second reading until January anyways. But I have great concerns from the superintendent of the cost of money that is going to be coming out of that budget for the school department. But Susan's I'm worried about because she cannot give us a direct estimate of how it's going to affect the city. But tiers, I really do support that. I support it 100% and I'm hoping, and it's a shame that maybe we can figure out and add some language in January on this resolution of adding a tier on that. I think that would be very supportive to do that. Talking with business owners and the strugglings that they're having, I think, with the tiers of them training young students from the high schools, coming in to work in their businesses, all that training and the expense of the training, and then they leave because of school. So, it becomes very difficult when you own a business and you're talking about a loss of money. You're looking at taxes, you're looking about health insurance. The cost is very, very high. But we also have a problem, too. We have many people living in Northampton and I've talked with some of them who do work in the businesses here where they not only have an apartment for themselves, but they have two to three other people with them to help with the cost of the rent, which is phenomenal. And even now, any stamton is not cheap anymore. That's becoming high. So, and I'm not going to mention about my business because it's a conflict as far as I can see as a counselor. I don't want to talk about a family business. I want to talk about the businesses that I know locally in the area that will find it very, very difficult with the small businesses. But I also need to look at what we call families trying to survive. And this is a really big problem. People are having a lot of problems. Their food, taking care, their car insurance to go to work and so forth like that. You just cannot live on an income with a minimum wage today. And I'm going to support this because I feel that people need to have a good quality of life and they're not having it right now. So, I'm supporting it.
Counselor Nash.
So, yeah, I've been, you know, I've been doing some research on this and so my thoughts are still kind of all over the place. But so, one of the things I did, I reached out to Patricia Crosby with the Regional Employment Board and she provided, you know, these figures. We have 95,000 jobs in the Franklin Hampshire area. 74% are in the private sector. Of the top five industries, education services sector is number one at 24%, 16% for healthcare and social assistance sector. Now, that one and the next two, Patricia felt were going to be pretty impacted by this. The retail sector, which is at 12%, and accommodations, hotels, and food service sector, which is at 9%. So, that 37% in the middle of these five industry areas are probably going to be impacted in some way, large or small. And I think also, in particular in the Northampton economy, that, you know, we don't have a corporate economy here, that the businesses downtown, you know, if you want to, you can walk in the door and you can meet the owner of that business probably within about two minutes if you ask for their name, or if you're just going to introduce yourself. And that, and I've really appreciated the feedback we've been getting. I really liked Judy Harrell's note and the challenge of training young people. But at the same time, you know, I want to, I'm going to be supporting this measure with the idea that it's not going to be, this is one tool within the bigger package of policy tools that we can use to help people. And one of the tools that we could use is actually tax people who earn a lot of money. Well, the federal government made a choice recently to not be real helpful around matters just like this just the day before. And that this is the way that we can push back and ask that the wage floor actually be raised, that, you know, that as, you know, somebody who's worked in human services, you know, that those direct care workers, you know, for DMH, DDS, people at nursing homes, people at that front line of education, they're all below this. And they're the ones who are, they're putting their hands on people, they're working directly with individuals, they're doing really important work and that, and trained work. We're not talking about what Judy was describing of training some young people to put scoops of ice cream in a bowl and, which is terrific, we're talking about people who have real skills. And there's, you know, within that 37%, there's a lot of people who are providing great service and also the work isn't being fully valued. The last thing I want to add is that we, that the state is part of this, state revenues, that, I mean, all of those, some of those sectors I talked about there have to do with state contracts for the services that are provided. And that the service organizations that we deal with in this area are bound by those contracts with those set rates. And that the state, if it chooses to go forward with this, which I hope they do, they're going to need to raise a little revenue, which has not been, the state's been shying away from that for a long time, to provide the funds for, you know, staff providing these So, anyway, we, I'm going to support this, but we need to be mindful of creating other policies that'll go in conjunction with it. And I expect that those things, I'm hopeful those things are going to happen. So, thank you.
Anyone else who's not spoken? Counselor Shara.
I want to just give a little gratitude for Susan Wright and for Superintendent Provost. As Counselor Barge mentioned, they both pulled together fairly significant projections for us on pretty short, in pretty short order for Monday's meeting, so I appreciate them doing that. And also, everyone who came on Monday. Almost every counselor was there and then, and we had a lot of great public comment and a lot of people who took the time to send us emails and letters. And I, you know, I really feel for the businesses that say that the previous increase, and actually I've heard from some that have told me that the previous increase was really a challenge for them. And they're not sure if they can find a way to do another step increase because their costs have increased but their revenues haven't. And so, that's hard. I don't think that they're exaggerating when they say that they're really on the edge. And I agree that it's very different to ask a large corporation to absorb something like this than a very small business with a few employees. But, you know, I feel for workers who can't make ends meet. The idea of a tiered system, I think, is attractive. How to make that fair is challenging. I don't know how you come up with a system that's fair. I think our economy's changed. I think some of these jobs that we considered first-time jobs are now, you know, jobs that people need to support themselves, support their families. So, that's, and sometimes they're combining that job with multiple jobs just to make ends meet and that's really, it's hard to figure out a way to make that system fair for everyone. So, it just feels to me like many people are just hanging on and I really wish we could find a way to holistically address that. I agree with Counselor Nash that I don't think our new tax plan is going to get us there, but it would be, I hope someday we can find out, find a way to kind of deal with all aspects of this and look at it without pitting, it always feels like we're pitting one side against the other and that's just, I don't think anyone wants to do that and it's not really a way to just get us all where we need to be and have everyone have a safe living wage. So, I appreciate the idea of indexing and, you know, I hope that we can get to a place where we don't need to make these jumps that are really hard for businesses to absorb and that, you know, I think this is a step in the right direction, but I, you know, I really just feel for everyone that's having a tough time with all of it.
Anyone else who hasn't spoken yet? Counselor Murphy.
I feel kind of unique here because I've been a union shop steward and I'm also a small business person. I think I'm unique here that I sign a million and a half to $2 million dollars with the paychecks on the front side. So, I employ people. And, I mean, my business won't be tremendously affected by this, but many small businesses will and, you know, I grew up here. I know a lot of the local business people. And we're not talking about union jobs. Usually they're skilled and they pay well above a $15 minimum because their people are, you know, are licensed or in some way performing a profession that they've come up through the ranks in and they're being paid well. But this is for entry-level positions. I'm concerned because the Seattle studies seem to say that about $13 is when people start cutting jobs. And I have a lot of empathy for people at the entry level. And I don't want to see them lose their jobs because we raise the threshold so high that small businesses have no choice but to cut them. You know, somewhere in there is a place of balance where we can get their incomes as good as we can get it without it costing people's jobs. My concern is we're very happy to sign on to this without a complete review. I looked at a number of studies, but in the world of examining studies, and particularly in a world where Seattle, which is the real best place to check this out, hasn't really even spent any time at $15 yet, so we really don't know what the outcome's going to be, but that's the best study. You know, I think we're kind of rushing it. I mean, I was technically educated. I like to read the studies. I like to be confident the facts support what we're choosing to do. And the jury's not in on that yet. And yet, we're very happy to take the plunge. And local economies are a lot more volatile than national economies are because the scale is lower and very much a downtown that sells posters and jelly beans and ice cream cones and, you know, you can't buy an extension cord on Main Street anymore. It's a very vulnerable mix of businesses that we have. mix of businesses that we have, many of which thrive on disposable income, and if that goes down, then there's a problem, that, that we're ready to take the leap and with the, the house of cards nature of our local economy, just move a card and say, let's see what happens. You know, let's do a social experiment or an economic experiment and say, okay, let's see what happens to you with just the $15 an hour. That, that seems kind of cavalier on our part. So I'm going to abstain from this. I think there's a point we could reach where it would work and wouldn't cost jobs. I am not confident we understand it well enough to go out and pick a number like 15 and say, let's go for that, that's someone everyone else is using. You know, I think that could wind up hurting the very people we want to help because their businesses go away or their job goes away. Somewhere in there, statistics will tell us the sweet spot is where you can get away with getting people as much as you can for their entry-level position and not killing the goose that they're working for. But I don't think we've put enough time into studying it, I think we're sort of saying, hey, let's get on the bandwagon. And just my inclination to want to understand fully what I'm doing before I do it is why I'm going to abstain from this. Not because I don't spiritually believe that entry-level people should be well-paid, but I don't think we should pick a number that results in them losing their job either. So without understanding it well enough to move forward, I really, I really don't want to be on board for that, but as I said, I do have a lot of empathy for them. And I do very much support the concept of tiering entry-level jobs for young people because frankly, it's good that they get paid, but they take a lot of intangibles away from their first job that serves them as well as the money does. You know, they learn the responsibility of showing up on time, they learn the difficulty of dealing with the public across the counter, you know, that it, some people are unreasonable and you've just got to deal with it because you're being paid to deal with it. You know, there's intangibles that they get, and then also the seniors that I've mentioned relative to my involvement with a nonprofit that hires them. You know, they're, I hire a bunch of retired people who are working for enrichment reasons beyond what they get paid. They get paid a number that works for them. But there are other reasons, quality of life reasons, why they still want to be in the workplace. And I think it, it injures them because I know in that environment, I'm going to have to not hire somebody back if we hit $15 an hour. And that would be unfortunate because a lot of what they work for is camaraderie, and one of them's not going to be there anymore if this occurs because we are on a fixed income, we just can't afford it. So the, the long and short of it is, for all of those reasons, I'm going to abstain.
Anyone else? Counsel LeBarge, did you want to say something?
Yes, I think all of us counselors feel that we don't want to see any businesses here in Northampton just fold, because I don't want to see that happen. That's why I think the tier is a great idea, I really do, especially for our students. When we're hearing from business owners, which I have, that they would have to lay off, you don't want that to happen. So I am hoping that some kind of a language through the state is put in there that is not going to let something like this happen. I mean, we just cannot afford to keep losing businesses here in the city of Northampton. And I've been told people that have left the center of Northampton didn't come out to give the real reasons why they left. They just wanted out and that was it, and didn't talk about their reasons, but some of the business people told me. So I think it's, this is serious, and we need to look at it very, very carefully. We have our hands full. Here we have families trying to survive, to bring in the food, like I said before, and it's become very, very critical. So I am just hoping that we, something can be done here so that we don't lose the businesses, we don't see owners of the businesses, small businesses, laying off their staff. Because to me, these people even working for them and getting laid off, they're not going to have a job. So somewhere, something has to be done here, and hopefully through the state and through the State House, that they will look at the seriousness on this, and I am hoping. And Counselor Ryan O'Donnell, you really like doing resolutions and ordinances, maybe you can think about some language with a tier or something, because I think it's very critical that that's added in here.
The, you know, it's interesting, the, we frequently talk about what we're supposed to do is try and reconcile competing interests. The unfortunate thing is, is that, and usually the case, most of our conflicts actually evolved from battles that are fought elsewhere, but we end up fighting for what scraps are left. What I want the state to do is establish a progressive income tax, whereas Counselor Nash cited, the data that he cited, we're a service economy, we don't make things anymore. And in fact, we're a service economy that subsidizes each other, that's Counsel Murphy's point. The reinvestment of the money, you know, I sell a piece of pie to someone who's going to maybe eventually cut my hair, and, you know, that we circulate this revenue in this one, but these meager funds and these meager circumstances. And we have instead, we have a taxation system that was just graphically illustrated on the federal level, which is rewarding and providing coverage for the largest earners, and earners is a generous description in my, by my reading, but the people who garner the vast amount of wealth, which is not available to a service economy community. We're not getting someone pulling up in a, you know, a state-of-the-art Tesla coming to buy a cup of coffee here in Northampton. They're not recharging our economy. For the most part, they're draining our economy. So we're rather than, you know, I think of the state, and the federal government have actually demurred, and in, in the federal government's case, have actually just pirated, but in the state's version, we have accommodated when we were so worried about being taxatusets, that what we did was, we reduced the requirements that we put on revenue gathering through high-income earners and corporations to promote those businesses, in the trickle-down theory that it all would benefit from the, the great largesse that would, you know, would come from them, which has not been realized. And as such, it's been deferred to property taxes. And the responsibility's been borne by local communities who have to actually charge a very regressive taxes, system, property tax. It's not based on your, how much money you have, it's based on how someone, how much someone values your property. And thereby, if you're on a fixed income, the house that you bought for $68,000 in 1970 is now assessed at $350,000, your income's not going up. You can't subsidize, you've paid down your mortgage, you can't subsidize the taxes, the property taxes, the regressive tax system that the state has left us with. And I'm frustrated because these are the fights that we continually have about the competing interests on the ground level here, pitting neighbor against neighbor because of abdication of responsibility by people in very expensive suits who don't listen very closely to the ground. So I, my inclination is to actually support this because what we're trying to do is at least mitigate their aberrant behavior in some way, in whatever way we can possibly. To Counsel Murphy's point about the $15, it's, it's not $15 out the gate, it's working progressively towards $15, and then would be indexed to the cost of inflation. We don't know what inflation's going to be, and we certainly know that $15 in so many years is certainly going to be worth less, at least if trends hold. And, and I think, I, you know, and I respect your concern on that level, but I don't, I just want to make the point that it's not $15 out the gate once the legislation passes or the ballot question passes. It actually is, it transitions to that slowly, because I think part of the, I mean, obviously what inspired that was the concerns that you talk about, the sticker shock, the inability to make the adjustment from an enormous leap like that. And it, it's, it is frustrating because we're apologizing for someone else. We're apologizing to the local business, and we're apologizing to the local residents. We're sorry, but you, we all find ourselves in these desperate straits because of something that's actually beyond our ability to manage or control. So our job is to mitigate and try and reduce and try to reconcile those, those competing interests. So that's just me on a soapbox, expressing my frustration that I think I've, I've expressed from day one when I first got sworn in, I don't know, 350 years ago. So I, I understand and feel your pain, to quote Bill Clinton, as you struggle with this because I share the same struggle, and it is maddening that it comes to this. It comes to this where we have to, we, we have to go hat in hand to a state that's been unresponsive and bears a significant responsibility for the circumstances we find ourselves in. Consecrating, you didn't get to change. All right, it's a resolution, but what's, what's the counsel's pleasure, roll call or?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Counselor Bigwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
I abstain.
Counselor Nash. Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in first reading, and by our rules, that will be, will be revisited in our next term at our January 4th meeting. Now we come, excuse me, and blessedly there are no presentations, so we come up to the consent agenda, and this is, includes the approval minutes for December 7th, 2017.
Motion to approve.
Also, oh, that's it, that's all it includes. Wow.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay. Now we recess for finance committee, and Counsel Murphy has the floor.
Thank you very much.
Call the roll of the minutes, please. There we are.
Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor Carney.
Present.
Counselor LeBarge.
Present.
Counselor Nash.
Here.
Excellent, the first thing is to approve the minutes of our December 7th meeting. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Excellent. Any changes or additions? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Great, opposed? All right. Financial orders, the first order we have, and the only order we have, is 17434, in order to appropriate free cash for fire alarm system upgrades at the DPW. Order that $20,000 be appropriated from the FY18 general fund, undesignated fund balance for the upgrades of an existing fire alarm system at the DPW barn and the installation of a fire alarm system at the DPW administration building. Do we have a motion of finance?
Make a motion.
Second.
And the mayor's here to answer questions.
Yes, we need counselors. And actually, I was going to note, when we submitted this, we did ask if it was possible to get two readings. It didn't make it on the agenda, but obviously it's the last meeting, so we can talk about that in the full meeting. But this is actually a project that we had anticipated doing as part of the capital program. You may recall, last year in the capital program, we did a, we did an upgrade to Forbes library and upgraded their fire alarm system, that they, they had sort of an, an older antiquated system, and we upgraded it to the same kind of Keltron system that we have in all of our more modern buildings that actually is connected directly to the fire station. And so this was a project we had in mind to do as part of the capital program, but we decided to try to move it forward and get it, try to get the project done, just because of the fact that it was a, kind of a safety issue. You may have read recently, well, last winter, a DPW barn in Tolland burned, and actually a couple of weeks ago, a DPW facility in Sandisfield had a freak fire and burned, which is tragic for them. Luckily, no lives were lost, but their entire fleet of snow plowing equipment was lost at the worst possible time. So we decided to try to just bring this forward, free cash has been certified, this is something we were going to pay for out of free cash, and to ask whether the council would sort of approve it on kind of a, on a faster track so that we could get this project in motion. There's a fire alarm system in the barn now that's sort of an older antiquated one, it's not connected to the, to the central fire alerting system that we have at dispatch. There's, there's also some non-hardwired alarm systems at the administration building. This would integrate all of them on the same type of a system, there'd be panels for each system, and it would be integrated with our dispatch center. So this is to try to use some of the free cash balance to do that.
Questions for the mayor? Counsel?
Actually, what you just described is just bringing them up to code, right?
We want to modernize them, yes, that's correct.
But I mean, modernizing, I mean, you know, freestanding smoke detectors in the administrative building is not, would not pass code, would not be if, if there were any renovations or...
Exactly, yes. So we want to, we want to get that up to date. But the main, the other piece of it is also the barn, because we do have, you know, welding equipment, we have fuels, we have oils, we have other kinds of things that are stored.
Settling in there, you have, yes.
So, so it's, you know, again, we have a system there now that, much like the library, the library had a system that was 20 or 30 years old, and, and we wanted, we just did that upgrade. Most of our other buildings, we've done upgrades on over time, obviously the police and fire station have state-of-the-art because those are newer, and most of our schools have new systems. So these were a couple of buildings that we wanted to address.
Any other questions for the mayor? Hearing none, all in favor of a positive recommendation of finance, please say aye.
Aye.
We do have one more, we started printing them on the back, so, we started printing them in the back, so I didn't miss one, I just hadn't turned a page over yet. This is 17435, this is in order to pay bills from a prior fiscal year. Order that the council authorizes a $88,000 in prior fiscal year bills, that's FY17. One of them is a DPW bill for bark mulch for $172, and it's the first time I've ever seen AEIOU on here. It's pre, a pre-employment physicals. Fire department, $2,730, police department, $546, that was for February, May, the police for 75, June, the police for 75, June, central services for 135, and a May and June for DPW, $1,355,000. Again, the total is $5,088, and these are bills from fiscal year 17. Do we have a motion of finance?
Make a motion.
Second.
Okay, and the mayor's here to answer questions about these, if there are any.
The bark mulch is pretty self-explanatory.
Bark mulch is the easy one.
AEIOU, that's actually just the name of a company that, that does many of our medical exams and medical screenings, particularly for firefighters and for police, and in some cases, some of our, some of our personnel that, like, work at the wastewater treatment plant get vaccinations, it's just sort of those kinds of things. So this is actually a, a series of really small bills that were inadvertently sent to HR instead of going to different departments, and so, and some of them were from May, from June, and so they missed the cutoff of June 30th. So we need authorization in order to pay them.
Counsel LeBarge?
Mayor, are you looking at two readings on this one also?
I was going to, these are the, yeah, I was going to ask for that, since, again, carrying it over would delay the payment of these bills further, and we'd like to pay them in the same year if we could.
Any other questions? The mayor, hearing none, all in favor of a positive recommendation of finance, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I don't, no new business since we're at the end of the session, so motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
All right, so we come out of recess and come back in a regular session, and we dive right back into financial orders. Item 17.429, it's in order to appropriate free, free cash to stabilization, capital stabilization, this is second reading, accept a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's made in second, any further discussion on this? Roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Bigwell.
Yes. All right, that passes in second reading. Item 17.430 is in order to appropriate free crash, cash to MPS McKinney, Vento Transportation Fund, second reading.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Seconded, further discussion?
Oh, Laura.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge.
Counselor LeBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shera.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
All right, that passes in second reading as well. Item 17.431, this is a transfer from landfill closure fund to the solid waste cell one account.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Discussion. All good? Okay.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shera.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes. So that passes in second reading. Item 17.432, this is an order to transfer retained earnings to water and sewer stabilization and vehicle replacement.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Take it away, Laura.
Sure. Counselor LeBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shera.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge.
All right, that passes in second reading. Item 17.434, this is an order to appropriate free cash for the fire alarm upgrades at the DPW. This is the first reading, it's what you just heard, with a positive recommendation from the finance committee.
Move to approve.
Motion's made. Further discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shera.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge.
All right, that passes in second reading. Item 17.434, this is an order to appropriate free cash for the fire alarm upgrades at the DPW. This is the first reading, it's what you just heard, with a positive recommendation from the finance committee.
Move to approve.
Motion's made. Further discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shera.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Suspend rule 14.
Second. The motion's made to suspend rules to allow for a second vote and it's been seconded by Counsel Murphy. Discussion on the suspension of rules?
Was that Counsel Bidwell? Was that you?
Counsel, Counsel Murphy seconded and.
Speaking with my voice.
Good job. Good speaking. Okay. So the motion's made and seconded to suspend rules. Any discussion on the suspension of rules? All those in favor of suspending rules, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, I'll accept a motion.
Move second reading.
Second.
And Counsel LeBarge, seconded. Any further discussion? Now a roll call.
Counsel O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counsel Shera.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shera.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Suspend rule 14.
That's passed in first reading. The motion's made to suspend the rules to allow for a second vote by Counsel LeBarge and seconded by Counsel Murphy.
Did it again.
All those in favor of suspending rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, I'll accept a motion to put it on the floor.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, Counsel Shera this time. We're all with a map tonight, the, to the second. So any further discussion?
Counselor Shera.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shera.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shera.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shera.
Yes.
Suspend rule 14.
Second.
Second.
The motion passed in first reading. We're now, a suspension of rules has been called for to allow for a second vote. Counsel LeBarge made the motion, seconded by Counsel Carney. Any discussion on the suspension of rules, please say, no? Okay. Opposed in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions?
Move approval on second reading.
Motion's made, is there a second? It's seconded for Counsel Bidwell. Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Aye.
Counselor LeBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shera.
Yes.
Suspend rule 14.
Second.
Second.
The motion passed in first reading. We're now, a suspension of rules has been called for to allow for a second vote. Counsel LeBarge made the motion, seconded by Counsel Carney. Any discussion on the suspension of rules, please say, no? Okay. Opposed in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions?
Move approval on second reading.
Motion's made, is there a second? It's seconded for Counsel Bidwell. Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shera.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shera.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shera.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shera.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shera.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge.
All right, that passes in second reading. Item 17.433, this is an order to establish $1,000 threshold for personal property tax exemption.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Discussion. Laura.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shera.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge.
All right, that passes in second reading. Item 17.434, this is an order to appropriate free cash for the fire alarm upgrades at the DPW. This is the first reading, it's what you just heard, with a positive recommendation from the finance committee.
Move to approve.
Motion's made. Further discussion on this item? Roll call, please.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shera.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shera.
Yes.
All right, that passes in second reading. Item 17.434, this is an order to pay bills from the prior fiscal year.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion's made and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor of suspending rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, I'll accept a motion.
Move second reading.
Second.
And Counsel LeBarge, seconded. Any further discussion? Now a roll call.
Counsel O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counsel Shera.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shera.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge.
All right, that passes in second reading. Item 17.435, this is an order to pay bills from the prior fiscal year.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion's made and seconded. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Losing track. Counselor Shera.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
[coughs]
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Suspend rule 14.
That's passed in first reading. The motion's made to suspend the rules to allow for a second vote by Counsel LeBarge and seconded by Counsel Murphy.
Did it again.
All those in favor of suspending rules, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, I'll accept a motion to put it on the floor.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, Counsel Shera this time. We're all with a map tonight, the, to the second. So any further discussion?
Counselor Shera.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shera.
Yes.
Suspend rule 14.
Second. The motion passed in first reading. We're now, a suspension of rules has been called for to allow for a second vote. Counsel LeBarge made the motion, seconded by Counsel Carney. Any discussion on the suspension of rules, please say, no? Okay. Opposed in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions?
Move approval on second reading.
Motion's made, is there a second? It's seconded for Counsel Bidwell. Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Aye.
Counselor LeBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shera.
Yes.
And Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge.
All right, that passes in second reading. Item 17.433, this is an order to establish $1,000 threshold for personal property tax exemption.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? Now a roll call.
Counsel O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counsel Shera.
Yes.
Counselor Bidwell.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Yes.
Counselor LeBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shera.
Yes.
Suspend rule 14.
Second. The motion passed in first reading. We're now, a suspension of rules has been called for to allow for a second vote. Counsel LeBarge made the motion, seconded by Counsel Carney. Any discussion on the suspension of rules, please say, no? Okay. Opposed in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions?
Move approval on second reading.
Motion's made, is there a second? It's seconded for Counsel Bidwell. Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Laura.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Klein.
Aye.
Counselor LeBarge.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor O'Donnell.
Yes.
Counselor Shera.
Yes.
And Counselor Bidwell.
Yes. All right, that passes in second reading. We're up to the new business, which is an item that we put on the agenda just in case.